I did.
I want to call the meeting to order. Will the recorder please call the roll?
Counselor Drea.
Present.
Counselor Irvin.
Here.
Counselor Fleck.
Here.
Youth representative.
Here.
Counselor Meridah.
Present.
Counselor Savage.
Here.
Counselor Stennis.
Here.
Mayor Solzby.
All right, item number two, Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Item number three, the oath of office for Counselor Drea.
So please raise your hand and repeat after me. Aye, Alex Drea.
Aye, Alex Drea.
You solemnly affirm that I will execute the duties of city councilor.
That I will execute the duties of city councilor.
Of the city of Cottage Grove.
Of the city of Cottage Grove.
A municipal corporation.
A municipal corporation.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And will uphold and defend.
And will uphold and defend.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
The state of Oregon.
The state of Oregon.
And the city of Cottage Grove.
And the city of Cottage Grove.
And will honestly and faithfully.
And will honestly and faithfully.
Perform the duties of my office.
Perform the duties of my office.
Congratulations.
And we have no items to be added to the agenda, so that takes us to appearance of interested citizens for items not on the agenda. We do have three signed up tonight. This is a time for citizen comment on items not listed on the agenda for a maximum of 30 minutes. Individual speakers must be recognized by the presiding officer, provide their name and address, and will be allowed up to five minutes or less with council approval. Comments regarding any matter scheduled for a public hearing may be provided only in that hearing. Comments on agenda items may be taken prior to a council discussion on that item, and the council will not engage in any discussion or make any decisions based on public comment at this time. However, the council may take comments under advisement for discussion and action at a future council meeting. So first name I have is Anna Petrick?
Petrick.
Petrick?
All right. Anna Petrick, 75874 Short Ridge Hill Road, Cottage Grove, Oregon. Some new people I haven't seen before, hi. I was born and raised here in 1992, graduated in 2010 from Cottage Grove High School, and I have written a letter. It's also addressed to the mayor, she's not here, if she can watch the recording, I guess. Madam Mayor, honorable counselors, my fellow citizens. On January 7th of 2023, Tyree Nichols was beaten in a confrontation with police. They claimed that he was unstable, that he resisted arrest, and that he reached for a weapon. He later died of his injuries. On September 1st of 2022, Alex Harrelson was beaten in a confrontation with police. They claimed that he was unstable, that he resisted arrest, and that he reached for a weapon. He has not died of his injuries. In Memphis, Tennessee, five local police assaulted a son of their community in cold blood meters away from his mother's doorstep. They were fired. The officer's body cam footage and prior incident records were examined, and they were convicted of second degree murder as well as criminal negligence, failure to intervene, failure to render aid, and violation of basic government policy regarding acceptable conduct of law enforcement personnel. In Cottage Grove, Oregon, five local police assaulted a son of their community in cold blood meters away from his mother's doorstep. They were put on administrative leave. What testimony and evidence could be procured was examined, and they were exonerated to the fullest extent of the law. Alex Harrelson was arrested again the following month for disorderly conduct, menacing, and for violation of his probation. Alex openly admitted to ingesting methamphetamine prior to the incident and fully complied with police, even asking if he could go back inside and apologize to the people he had frightened. Alex Harrelson spent Christmas and New Years locked in a cage in the Cottage Grove Municipal Jail. Tyree Nichols' mom will spend Mother's Day alone this year. She will never hear her baby's voice ever again. Brian Miller's friends will celebrate his birthday this year by lighting candles and singing songs without him. I will never see his smile ever again. Stop the predatory practices of our judicial system. Stop the police brutalization of our children, and stop turning a blind eye to the neighbors dying in your own backyard. Our society is made of the people, by the people, for the people. Protect and serve everyone. Thank you.
Members of the City Council, I come before you today to talk to you about the Cottage Grove Carousel. In the last year, two years, how many of you have been down there to see it at the King of States? Okay, so you can now assume it is a formal invitation to visit us this coming Saturday from 10:00 to 4:00. You get a free ride, or all the free rides you want. Now, this carousel is kind of special to those of us that have been working with it for the last five years. When we took it over, it was over 500 pieces of junk, rusted metal, broken horses, unpainted animals, and wood coated with lead-based paint. So it pretty much started from scratch, and it's only because of the leadership of the most brilliant man I know, Russ McGuire, retired. That's true. Retired from warehouses and engineer, he recruited several millwrights that came on as volunteers. We have over 11,000 hours of volunteer labor put into this piece of beauty, and it is a piece of beauty. And we're finding a red-haired girl, let me see him over here. She's one of our big fans, she comes all the time. You can't ride the carousel and frown, it's against the law. You got to smile, and everybody does. All rides are free, as I said before. Is it important to Cottage Grove to locate this inside the city limits? Well, considering that from just north of Eugene to just south of Roseburg, we are the only traveling carousel, the only carousel at all, for over 600,000 people in that area. So we think that it might be a real boost to the economy of the city. Let me turn my page over. When we took this machine over, it was valued at somewhere over $40,000 in the condition that it was in now. Now, the latest bid we have on it will be around $450,000. So we think that we've made some progress with the beast, and it is gorgeous. Everybody that's been involved with it is truly proud of what we have done. You can see on your handout that we have several hundred thousand dollars worth of donations and in-kind work done on it by the people in this area. So we would like to, again, invite you to come down and see us, and we would like to have any input from the city that we can get as to where we could locate it, because we have very specific needs for this thing. It's got to be almost 30 feet high, but we would love to have it here. We think that it would be a boon to the community. And if you don't think that's true, go ahead and call the city managers at Albany and Salem and ask them what it's done for them. Thank you for your time. Do you have any questions?
We can't do that at this time.
Hello, I'm Dale Gangl, live at 1386 Cottonwood Place, and I've just got a couple of comments here. I know we've got free speech in this town, that don't mean we can ride on sidewalks and that and, you know, harass people with, you know, freedom market thing. Well, I got a compliment of Dana Meridah, he was right there and cleaned it up real quick, and I understand he cleans up quite a bit of graffiti around this town. And that being part of the First Amendment, free speech, I thought it'd be appropriate every one of you sworn oath to the Constitution. Well, this here's a copy of the Constitution and the Declaration of Independence here, and it's got these little flashcards in there, perforated cards you can take out, questions on one side and the answers on the back. They're actually kind of fun to play with, and I'd like to give these to every member of the council if possible. And again, I'd just like to thank Dana Meridah for what he did cleaning up the mess the other day and what he does around town. He is trying hard. I'm not here to condemn anybody, but the Constitution, I hate to burden it, but, you know, we have to follow that, you know? In today's world, too many people don't. If they don't follow them, they're elected officials, it's called prison, and I don't want to see anybody here charged for that. You know, just, I'm a firm believer, I'm a firm believer in the Pledge of Allegiance. I believe in this United States of America. That's all I got to say. Thank you.
All right, we have no public hearings. That takes us to the consent agenda.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Repose.
No, I'm abstaining since I wasn't present as a counselor.
Okay. Did you get that, Mandy? Probably ought to pause until the recorder turns. She needed to get the resolution numbers.
Seems like a joke would be really appropriate right now, but.
Only inappropriate. Okay, so item number nine, eight, resolutions and ordinances. First resolution, requesting the Board of Commissioners of Lane County to surrender jurisdiction on approximately 900 linear feet of South Sixth Street, lies within the incorporated city limits of Cottage Grove. That's reported by Mr. Stewart.
Thank you, Counsel. President Irvin, and good evening, Counsel. So at the January 23rd, 2023 City Council meeting, Council adopted ordinance number 3169, annexing approximately 900 linear feet, which is .17 road miles of South Sixth Street into the incorporated, into the incorporated city limits of Cottage Grove. The purpose of the annexation initiated in partnership with Lane County Public Works was to support the redevelopment of the Hillcrest Market located at 77967 South Sixth Street by creating a contiguous connection to the city and allowing the annexation of that parcel. It is now appropriate to request a jurisdictional transfer of the portion of the South Sixth Street annexed into the city by ordinance number 3169 from the Lane County Board of Commissioners. The attached resolution is the official request for surrender of the above-described road from the county to the city. Upon approval from Council, the resolution will be presented to Lane County Board of Commissioners for their consideration. Stat's recommendation is that the Council, that the City Council adopt the attached resolution requesting the Board of Commissioners of Lane County to surrender jurisdiction of the described road sections.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Can we get a resolution number?
2090.
Any discussion? Counselor Fleck?
Mr. Counsel President, I move that the Council adopt Resolution 2090.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All right, will the recorder please call the roll?
Counselor Savage?
Aye.
Counselor Stennis?
Aye.
Counselor Meridah?
Aye.
Counselor Drea?
Aye.
Counselor Fleck?
Aye.
Counselor Irvin?
Aye.
Youth representative?
All right, next resolution is the first vote on ordinance annexing 77968 South Sixth Street into the city of Cottage Grove. Mr. Stewart?
Thank you, Counsel. Paul Joel, GJR LLC, the owner of 77967 South Sixth Street, located in the northeast one quarter of Section 4 Township 21 South Range, excuse me, Township 21 South Range 3 west of the Lamont-Brady in Lane County, Oregon, has applied for an expedited annexation procedure for 77967 South Sixth Street, Cottage Grove, Oregon 97424. The purpose of this annexation application is to redevelop the property under the city of Cottage Grove jurisdiction. The map and legal description of the area being annexed are attached as Exhibit A and B respectively to the ordinance. The expedited process is being used pursuant to Section 18.04.050 of the Cottage Grove Municipal Court. Notification, so public notice was sent January 26, 2023. Property owners within 300 feet of the subject property, any affected special district and any local organization requested notification of proposed annexation. They had 14 days to provide comments in writing or request a public hearing in writing. The deadline for receipt of requests is the end of the day on Friday, February 10, 2023, at 5:00 p.m. At this time, the memo was created, one written comment has been received. No requests for the public hearing have been received. Criteria. Section 18.04.040 A through D provides that the decision to approve an annexation shall be based on the findings of fact with respect to each of the criteria and standards in this section, which are also included in Section 4 of the ordinance. They are, item A, the property is within the city's urban growth boundary, and the area to be annexed is located within the urban growth boundary. Therefore, this criteria has been met. Item B, the property is contiguous to city, current city limits, the area to be annexed above city limits on the west side of the subject property, where it above South Sixth Street, which was annexed by ordinance number 3169. This criteria is met. Item C, unless the proposed annexation area is surrounded by the city, the majority of the property owners and electors within the proposed annexation area have consented in writing to the annexation for a standard procedure with a public. Public hearing, or all property owners and at least 50% of the electors within the annexed area have consented in writing to the annexation for an expedited procedure without a public hearing as per ORS 222.125 or 222.170. The proposed annexation area is not surrounded by the city. However, all property owners, including owners via land sales contract and the original owners and all the electors have consented in writing to the annexation for an expedited procedure without a public hearing per ORS 222.125 or 222.170. Therefore, this criteria is met. And finally, item D, adequate services and infrastructure exist or can be provided by the, at the proposed annexation site as per the applicable comprehensive plan designation. These services and infrastructure include provision of water, sewage service, storm drainage in streets. The subject property can be served by city water, sewer, and storm sewer. The subject property is accessed via South Sixth Street, a 60-foot wide right-of-way that is paved into travel lanes and bike lanes. This criteria has been met. The annexation is in compliance with Section 18.04.040 A through D. The recommendation, the City Council's hold the first vote on the attached ordinance. The ordinance will be brought back to Council at the February 27 City Council meeting for a second vote. I would add that there was an individual in the office today that was there to make, ask some questions and make contact with staff, and I'm not 100% sure that that individual might be present tonight. I'm not sure.
All right, and can we get an ordinance number?
The ordinance number 3170.
All right, and anyone wish to make comment? We have no one signed up, but anyone from the public wish to make comment on this item? Okay, seeing none.
Mr. Counsel President, I move that the Council hold a first reading towards adoption on Resolution 3170.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Counselor Stennis?
Two, would this be a vote or just a reading?
It's a vote. It's the first vote.
Did I say vote?
You said reading.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's the old charter.
That is the old charter. I apologize.
Another, will annexation, sorry, annexation allow us to address the Parker's concerns in the letter that we have here? They seem quite legitimate.
That's President Irvin, Counselor Stennis. The items that were mentioned in the written of concerns would, are not part of the criteria for tonight's annexation. The appropriate time for those comments to be addressed would be at the time of the site design review, or would go before the planning commission, and it's my understanding that these success service stations being proposed, they would also go through a conditional use permit process. So the items that are mentioned in the public comment will be presented at that time during that process for consideration.
I'm just curious, can we potentially say add signage indicating a private driveway, these kinds of things, or?
Not at this time. I read the four criteria that you're to base this decision on. That would be at the next process.
Okay, thanks.
Counselor Meridah?
Director Stewart, just to clarify, under item C, it said that all consent, all property owners consented, that was 100%? Or just a 50% criteria?
Counsel President Irvin and Counselor Meridah, that it's correct that all the owners and potential electors for this piece of property voted in favor, so it's 100%.
Thank you.
Just a point, are you watching to make sure if anybody has? Counselor Fleck?
Oh, I was just going to make a comment that if it is going to the planning commission, we need to be very careful about commenting on it because we're the appellate body for the planning commission, so land use is kind of tricky. We need to be really careful about making comments about future development.
Do we need an amended motion? Where is it? Okay, any further discussion? All right, will the recorder please call the roll?
Counselor Meridah?
Aye.
Counselor Savage?
Aye.
Youth representative?
Aye.
Counselor Fleck?
Aye.
Counselor Stennis?
Aye.
Counselor Drea?
Aye.
Counselor Irvin?
Aye.
All right, that takes us to business from the City Council. And our first item here is City Council consideration of support for the reforestation and shade project in the Rauck River Nature Park. Steph, Mr. Stewart?
Thank you, Counsel President. The Coastport Lamont Watershed Council is collaborating with the Freshwater Trust, an Oregon-based nonprofit organization with a mission to preserve and restore freshwater ecosystems in the Coastport watershed. The Freshwater Trust launched a riparian, riparian restor, reforestation program in 2023 to plant and steward native trees and shrubs in the upper Lamont watershed to improve wildlife habitat and water quality. Funding is from the Metropolitan Wastewater Commission to help achieve its water quality goals, in particular, growing a tree canopy while shade streams and produce shade thermal credits the MWMC can use for the water quality compliance. Ms. Newman reviewed city-owned properties for areas on the south and west banks of the Coastport and Rauck River that could qualify for riparian reforestation produced shade credits. The city planner and public works developer, myself, met with Riley Newman from the Coastport Watershed Council, along with Olivia Durin and Meg Elias, I believe, from the Freshwater Trust to learn about the reforestation and trade shade program for property in the Rauck River Nature Park along the Rauck River. The Freshwater Trust in partnership with the Coastport of Lamont Watershed Council is proposing to lease approximately 3.3 acres for 20 years at $350 per acre per year. Ms. Newman and Olivia Durham has prepared a presentation to the Council detailing the proposal and will be able to answer any questions that the Council may have. The project design concept is included for your review. The area within, the area proposed for the lease and reforestation is covered with invasive species, English ivy and Himalayan blackberries. The area has also been used recently for illegal camping and dumping of garbage. City staff has cleaned up abandoned campsites in the past few years and is currently working with the Sheriff's inmate crew to clean up litter and illegal dump sites. And the Coastport Watershed Council actually held a cleanup this past weekend of the Rauck River Nature Park. If the project is approved, the Freshwater Trust will be removing invasive vegetation each year. The project would also allow for trails and formative signage about the reforestation and the wildlife in the park to educate park users and promote positive use of the park while returning valuable uses. If the City Council supports this program, proposed by the Watershed Council and the Freshwater Trust have provided sites, there may be additional sites that the City Council, that staff will bring before the City Council that would provide shade credits. But this time I'd like to, we have Ms. Newman in the audience, and then we also have Ms. Durin here from the Freshwater Trust to give a presentation.
Welcome up.
Hello, everyone. My name's Riley Newman, I'm the Projects Manager with the Coastport Lamont Watershed Council, and I will hopefully defer to Olivia to give her presentation on the program and how we think it might be a good fit for Rauck River Nature Park. And then once she's finished, oh, go ahead, Olivia. And I was like, once she's done with the presentation, I'm sure we'll be happy to answer questions. Sorry, thanks, Olivia.
Thank you, Riley. I'm just happy that my audio is coming through. That was a little bit of a challenge. Thank you. So I would like to tell you more about this proposed collaboration with our two organizations and the city of Cottage Grove, more detail about the actions that we are proposing and the timeline, what stewardship could look like, what lease agreements could look like, and then next step. So the goal of this project would be to improve wildlife habitat and water quality as a collaboration with the Freshwater Trust and the Coastport Lamont Watershed Council and the city of Cottage Grove. The funding is from the MWMC, as was mentioned, and they are the wastewater utility for Eugene, Springfield, and Lane Counties. And this project is a vintage. And this project is of interest to them because new tree canopies that grows the shade stream can produce shade credits or thermal credits, they're sometimes called, that the MWMC can use for its water quality complaints. And we have identified the Rao River Nature Park as a priority to restore shade. It has also been identified in an earlier analysis by the Army Corps as a restoration priority. So this figure on the right is from the Rao River Nature Park Master Plan, and I don't expect that you can see much of that, but perhaps you can make out the tan polygon, which is the BMX facility. The pink polygons, those are northwestern pond turtle habitat where previous restoration has taken place. The fishing pond is there. And this map is intended to orient you to the area that we are proposing for a project. And the blue box, the blue rectangle on top of the image is indicating the part of the park that I will show you next on the next map. So here, the yellow hatchmark, that is our proposed planting area. It's along the river. It's about 60 feet wide on average. And what we would like to do is to lease a portion of few tax plots to plant and maintain a riparian or stream side forest. So we would like to plant in about 3.3 acres, starting by removing invasive weeds such as Himalayan blackberry, the ivy, the Japanese knotweed, as early as the spring. And we'd be interested in planting a diverse mix of native trees and shrubs this fall. The Coastport Atlantic Watershed Council, and Riley specifically, would be the local project manager and lead practitioner. So each of these projects does have defined performance standards that we must meet that indicate a healthy riparian forest. So that's things like growing a minimum of tree canopy cover, supporting a minimum native species diversity and cover, and keeping weeds below certain thresholds. To confirm that we are meeting those performance standards and to identify stewardship needs, we monitor on a regular basis. And essentially, this means that we are committed to consistent, ongoing stewardship for the full life of the project. And so over that 20-year duration, we return to do weed control, beaver browse protection, whatever is needed to grow a healthy native riparian forest in the planting area. I want to say just a little bit more about our stewardship approach, which uses an integrated test management approach, meaning that we select among mechanical, chemical, and cultural weed control methods to pick the one that is the most effective with the lowest impact. We use only herbicides that have been found to not jeopardize salmon and other invasive aquatic wildlife. And we follow practices that are designed to minimize disturbance during bird nesting season and also minimize disturbance for the northwestern pond turtles that are on site. Generally, to successfully establish a restoration activity can be the most intensive in the first year, and then it gradually papers off over two to three years. But we do consistent stewardship over the entire 20-year duration. This image here is, on the right is one of our projects that has actually been growing for 11 years now. It's kind of a before and after project. This is a publicly accessible site that the city of Springfield owns, but anyone is welcome to visit. There's some nice signage. So we have funds to pay for all of the implementation and stewardship activities for the whole 20-year duration of the project. There is no cost here or work share necessary. That does represent a substantial investment for us, and so we want to protect the planting area and secure access for stewardship for the duration of the project. And so we typically do that through a 20-year lease, the basic terms of which are basically the city would avoid damage to the planting. The Freshwater Trust and the Watershed Council is on maintenance within the planting area. The city would not knowingly allow incompatible use that might damage planting, such as construction within the lease area, dumping, that kind of thing, and would avoid land use adjacent to the planting that may damage them. The lease boundaries are determined by a mutual agreement. So we saw that yellow polygon that was our proposed planting area, but any areas that might be used for rails for river access points, those can all be removed from the proposed planting and planting. And the lease does not restrict access as long as plants are allowed to establish and grow. And as was mentioned, we are proposing to pay $350 an acre every year. So the Freshwater Trust and the Watershed Council, I mean, we're both environmental nonprofits, and the Rao River Nature Park team doing a project here is especially appealing to us because it complements the northwestern pond turtle habitat restoration that has been done earlier and enhances wildlife habitat. The riparian forest, the stream side forest will shade the river and improve water quality that way, but will also reduce erosion and stabilize the bank, absorb excess nutrients and pollution before they reach the stream and suppress weeds. And also, the park is a public property with a natural resource designation, which is really appealing because the project can benefit the community at large. The project can be designed to accommodate hiking trails, designated river access points. We feel that the project is unlikely to interfere with fishing ponds, BMX facilities, or other current leases. And we believe that the project supports the master plan goal of experiential learning and public education, and we can do that through providing signage to learn more about the project and the park habitat, which is something that we found at our other project. We also know that additional presence on site may be a deterrent to further urban camping. Again, I would reiterate, there is no cost in the city. We cover the bills for all of the actions that I mentioned, and this results in an additional lease payment, which is equivalent to about $23,000 to develop for the project, which, I believe, demonstrates fiscal responsibility and public land management. So in terms of next steps, we would like to ideally start weed control this spring, but we would need to sign some sort of agreement before that weed control begins. And we have provided a lease template for review by the city council and the city labor team. We request the council's support for this project. We are very happy to provide references from other cities and public entities with whom we have collaborated on similar projects. And as was mentioned, the council supports this program. We would like to explore other city councils that could be a good fit for this kind of project. I am very happy to answer any questions or take any comments now, or if that is permissible, or I can be reached at the email shown on your screen. Thank you.
Thank you, Olivia. You guys have any questions that Olivia or I can ask?
Counselor Stenett? Thank you. I love the park. My family loves it. The turtles are obviously maybe the main attraction. It's kind of their world. I wonder how you take on a project so extensively without disturbing the turtles? Just kind of curious.
Yeah, so that's a great point. Fortunately, a lot of the activities that we're proposing are really ground disturbing activities, so rather than digging a hole, so fortunately, the areas that we will be doing these activities are not currently active nesting habitats. They're not providing the habitat that a pond turtle would be seeking out. In fact, they prefer areas that are short-statured grasses. So typically, they're nesting in areas that are regularly mowed. If we were to come across a pond turtle, I have had a permit from Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife in the past, and will be getting another one where you actually are permitted to handle the turtles. They move slow, so if you find one, you can typically pick it up and move it out of the way.
Thank you.
Counselor Meriday?
I was able to participate in the cleanup, and this will be a real benefit for the public because I've never seen the diameter of blackberries, I mean, this big. To get to the trash, we had to clip away a lot of blackberry vines and heritage growth, old growth.
Old growth, yeah.
It'll, I'm sure it'll free up much more of the park for public use by removing these invasive blackberries, and ivy is also getting quite bad in places.
Absolutely. And another benefit is that just by removing the blackberries, there's potentially a lot of native understory that's just been suppressed. And so in addition to installing these trees and shrubs, that potentially there'll be some more good surprises underneath the blackberry.
Counsel Flood?
Oh, I'm sorry. Counselor Stenett? It doesn't, either way.
Go ahead, babe.
I was just curious. She mentioned the possibility of other projects on city property. Do you have a notion what those might be? I'm just kind of curious at this stage.
Well, there's nothing official, but there is a ArcGIS map that shows areas that have been prioritized. There's been an analysis. It is not ground-tested or ground-truthed, so a lot of these sites we'll have to actually go out and take a look at, which, other than the Rao River Nature Park site, we have not, but that is one of our next steps, is actually to go out and look at some other potential sites. Areas that I've looked at, just anecdotally, have been along the golf course, over along the golf course, and near the wastewater treatment plant.
Well, I think this sounds wonderful. And so with that, I will move that the council give the city manager direction to prepare and enter into a lease agreement allowing, I apologize, the Freshwater Trust and Coastport Atlantic Watershed Project to begin the project.
Second.
The motion with a second. And you, Mr. Stewart?
I just wanted to add, thank you, Council President. We did receive a comment today from Ms. Stark. I believe it was placed at each of your stations. I just, it was in support of this partnership, so I just wanted to make sure that that was entered into the record.
I have just one comment before we call the roll, or maybe two. I couldn't quite make out what was said about the trails or the potential development of the trails. Can you speak to that?
Yeah, absolutely. So there is no way it hinders trails. So if the city wanted to put in, you know, a walking trail through the project, that would not, because as long as the trees and shrubs are allowed to grow, that they won't, as long as that doesn't hinder those, that's not going to be an issue. So it'll still allow water access and things like that. I think the sort of development they're thinking of is, you know, we're not going to be, you know, building a dock maybe there, or, you know, building a storage shed and that sort of thing, things that probably wouldn't happen in a, you know, a riparian area otherwise.
And the second part to that, and I think you partially answered it just right there, is what is the utility for both sides of having a lease agreement rather than just go ahead and do the work kind of agreement?
Well, I would maybe rather, Olivia, add on to this, but really, it is to ensure that the project is successful. They're investing a lot of money into that, and I think that over that 20-year life allows the trees to get to a free-to-growth state that they won't be easily disturbed through regular park use.
Thank you. All right. And all in favor of a motion, say aye.
Aye.
All right. That brings us to concerns from council. Counselor Drew?
Thank you, Council President Urban. I have a few items I'd like to bring up. My heart goes out to Turkey and its residents, to the thousands of lives lost in the 7.8 magnitude earthquake that occurred on February 6th. I served in the Peace Corps in Azerbaijan for three years, where I learned Azerbaijani, which is a Turkic language. Turkey is Azerbaijan's brother nation. I have friends who live in Turkey, and my deepest condolences and grief goes out to you. And we are seeing just how difficult it is to get aid to our smaller rural communities in Turkey following the earthquake, so I want to underscore the importance of our city being prepared with materials and supplies on hand in the event of a Cascadia subduction zone earthquake. A Cascadia subduction zone event is estimated to be 7.0 magnitude or higher. Experts estimate there's a 37% chance the next major Cascadia earthquake will occur sometime in the next 50 years. With the current preparedness levels across Oregon, we can anticipate being without external service or help or assistance for at least two weeks as a small rural city. There are older buildings in Cottage Grove that will not likely be able to withstand a Cascadia subduction zone event. I encourage staff at the city to learn from what Turkey's rural cities are experiencing, and I encourage the community to research how they can be prepared for such an event. Also, not super good news. Last week, Lane County Public Health released a report on suicide in Lane County. In 2020, the suicide rate in Lane County was 65% greater than the U.S. average and 21% greater than the state of Oregon. Men are four times more likely to die by suicide compared to females, in particular because they tend to use more lethal means such as firearms. In particular, called out in the report was that Cottage Grove has double the rate you would likely see of suicide compared to all of Lane County, which is already higher than the Oregon state rate of suicide. So this is very concerning. It is both distressing and troubling that there are so many people in our community who are experiencing such great pain. I want to remind those who are watching, watching later in the audience, there is a National Suicide Prevention Hotline, 988. Talking about suicide is all right during, while people have the impulse to kill themselves. Together as a city, we can foster collective meaning and purpose, prioritize relationships, and work together to build resilience. As I said, talking about suicide is safe before and during times of crisis. It provides people with a sense of relief. It demonstrates respect and acknowledges their pain. We can also reach out to the Lane County Suicide Prevention Coalition for additional resources on how we can all be a part of helping our community members feel cared for so they don't take their own lives. Thank you.
Counsel Flood?
Yes, thank you. I actually attended three different meetings recently, the ElCOG meeting, the ElRappa meeting, and the Lane Area Commission on Transportation meeting. I guess too many acronyms. Lane Council of Governments, Lane Regional Air Protection Agency, and the Lane Area Commission on Transportation. One of the items of those meetings that caught my attention was caught my attention was a discussion at the Lane Area Commission on Transportation about some legislation impacting our area, and whether that group should have advocacy or not. And I never had to mention it because we steered away from that. But some of these items, I actually was looking at, I disagreed with. And I thought, gosh, that's, would not be good for a group of us who don't have direction from our council to actually be advocating, you know, from a group where maybe not everybody's together. House Bill 2101 was of interest, though, and I mentioned that to city manager previously. Basically, what we do every year is we wash our money with ODOT, our federal money. So federal money has a lot of requirements. It has matching requirements. And so the city, not, you know, having the same capacity as ODOT, will wash a lot of our money at, what is it, $0.92 a dollar now, I think? 90. I'm sorry, it's getting worse. Yes, 90. It used to be 94. But at least we're able to do that. And so apparently, that was going to go away, and this House bill is going to support continuing that. So I think it's really important for us to do that. I also want to mention today, and I apologize, I did not get a chance to read it all, and then I forgot to bring it, but I was leading the League of Oregon Cities' update about another set of legislation talking about setting housing goals. This is part of the governor's new package. Everything I read, which was about half of the packet, nothing raised a red flag, but it was for cities of 10,000 population and more, and it was setting goals. I don't remember, I didn't get to the part of whether there was teeth or not, but I guess I wanted us to pay attention to that as well, because I think done well, this is a huge opportunity. Done poorly, takes away local control. So I just want to kind of highlight that concern. Thank you.
Counsel Savage?
Thank you so much. I'll keep mine really brief. I was at the Armory this weekend for an event on Saturday, and boy, do those curtains look glamorous. They're gorgeous. It really transforms that space. So I just wanted to acknowledge that they're absolutely incredible. If you don't get a chance to go in, try and pop in at the next event. It looks absolutely fantastic.
Counsel Merideth?
Thank you, Council President Irvin. I attended my first meeting of the Cottage Grove Community Development Corporation, and they are actively recruiting board members and going to evaluate the rain program to see about continuing that. I just got a quick exposure to it. It's, I, is, maybe you can help me, it's not chamber, it's not downtown, but it's its own entity. So we have three partners, basically all working to promote the business and financial health of our community. So I'm looking forward to working with that group. I also attended an event in the Armory and at the WOE fairgrounds this weekend, and it was great to see the community doing different activities to use these resources. The Freedom Market at the Armory was, had a very great feel to the room. Saw a lot of familiar faces from other events through the farmers type markets and country fair affiliates and completely unknowns. So the WOE grounds are trying to move towards using the fairgrounds year round. And it was good to see those activities. I look forward to coming to the open house at the Carousel this weekend as well. It's great to see all the things that are happening in our community. And I had one more thing. What was it? Oh, a citizen concern. I know it's not our project, but on the 99 revitalization, they were concerned about the crosswalk where there had been a fatality, and were wondering if that's going to be moved or marked. And I didn't know who to ask about it.
Counsel President, Counsel Merideth, the project will include a fully developed crosswalk that will have a rest space, safe space in the middle, and it'll be lit. It'll be very similar to the one on Rouse Hill. I believe it's going to be very close to the same location as the current crosswalk, but it'll be fully protected to today's ODOT standards that they have adopted in their regulations.
And if you go to our webpage in the construction corner, you can actually click on that and here's, read some of the information about the construction going on. But it'll also take you to the ODOT page that shows you what that project's going to look like, and the improvements that they're making and everything on Highway 99.
Thank you both.
Actually, I'm sorry, I forgot a couple of the things. The next step, which I believe I'm trying to remember, was, I'm not going to remember the years, the next step, which is the state process of allocating funds, has quite a few projects in our area. We're actually, I was very pleased to look at the recommendations. I mean, that's not been formally approved yet, but quite a few projects in this area, which was wonderful. And I did also mention in that meeting that the temporary center line that they put in is really, it's nearly gone at this point. And when you're driving that at night, it is really hard to see where the lanes are. But I did mention that, and the area leader there was, had taken note. So hopefully, that will get redone.
Counsel President, Counsel Fudd, both Sean and I, project coordinator myself, meet weekly on both those projects. They have a meeting. So if any of the counselors have concerns, we brought up last week, concerns about the traffic direction and flagging taking place because there's cars going over there, connect through the wrong direction and various different things. So any type of a comment like this, we'll pass that on. Tomorrow is the actual meeting day, Tuesday, for the 99 urban grade upgrade. I'll bring this to their attention tomorrow.
Thank you.
All right. I've got a couple here. Also had some committee meetings, Lane Economic Committee, the Cottage Grove Community Foundation, I believe, and there was another subcommittee, the Seaweed Board, Cascades West Economic Development Board. So just some of the highlights from that, we had in the Lane Economic Committee meeting, we had a presentation from Huerto de Familia, which is an organization that is working with Latino populations to bolster business. And they do new business entrepreneurship, as well as existing businesses. And they've, part of their success story over the last three years is launching of 40 new businesses in that area. They have some focus on the food service industries and getting, making connections throughout the Lane County area. They also have programs that they're launching that are open to the general public, workshops that will be topical in terms of planning for their kind of business plan and specific topics that come up. But those are in development now. Information, if you want further information on any of this, please just feel free to reach out. I can forward stuff along. There's going to be a Lane Council of Governments' Member Appreciation Dinner at the Armory, Saturday, March 4, at 5:00 p.m. And they're looking for nominations for different positions of recognition from public officials to citizens to, you know, city municipal staffs. There's also a list, I have a link for that, but it can be seen at the ElCog website. And then we got that little update from the Oregon Department of Agriculture, just kind of talking about what they're involved in, what trends they're seeing, and what's coming down the line. One of the elements of interest for me, I was listening to an address given by Gavin Newsom, I think it was while the recall was happening, and he was really highlighting some of the things he was working on. And one of them was this big federal grant for wind generation off their shore. And so when the representative from Oregon Department of Agriculture mentioned that, I didn't, I didn't know how far up and down the coastline that goes. So I'm going to look into that a little bit further. About what, there were time horizon that was given was maybe somewhere in the next 10 years. But we certainly have some developments happening in our, on our coastal towns that could be impacted by that and certain shrimp. So that was of interest. An item that came through on, a question from the radio, related to the population signs, and when those are going to get updated. So was able to connect with Mr. Stewart on that. I don't know if you want to address that, or?
Sure. I cannot attempt, Counsel President Irvin. So this has been a request of mine to ODOT, probably well, since I've been there, here with six years now, each year to about those signs. It generally comes from the request of an elected official that knows that our population signs are completely out of whack. So the last time I spoke with ODOT, they were directing me to the sign shop. I was told that they're working on it. And they only plan on changing the signs once every 10 years, that those, they will be using the official census population numbers, not PSU's numbers that we get each year. I don't have the census number off the top of my head, but it's something like 10,570 or something like that, where PSU has us this year at 10,792. So I will maintain my vigilance in trying to request ODOT to someday get those signs changed. I have threatened to see if we can just make some stickers and put our own numbers up there, but I've been informed that ODOT specifically has said that that is not approval. I don't know that I want to get myself in trouble. But so it is very frustrating. I understand. It's a big deal for us. I mean, it's nice to know what your population is when you pull in, and we're over 1,000 people shy. What's the correct number?
And the two signs don't match. They're different numbers, different directions.
Even better.
We used to do the signs ourselves and change the numbers, but ODOT put new signs up about eight years ago, nine years ago, and told us not to touch them anymore. They're on their right of way, so.
So quickly, a couple more things I just wanted to bring back up and float as the ideas. I know, I think I'd mentioned one before, but there's a comment about how we might mitigate the marijuana odor coming from some of the dispensaries in the highly populated areas. And so I just want to voice that again, and support to have staff come and, you know, present options there of what might be done. And then the other part that kind of stemmed out of the conversation, actually from a meeting or two ago, from the Economic Development meeting, was this thing that Vinita's doing, which I actually finally just looked at it today, and I think it probably could be a little more robust, but they put together through different research, I don't recall the acronym, American something, to provide like demographic information that's readily available for anybody wanting to start a business, that kind of that market research thing. Here's who's here, here's what you might be expecting, anticipating as an attractant for someone wanting to plant here. So I just want to put that bug in staff's ears of maybe considering doing something along those lines. And I'm sure there's more, like I split on my firewood yesterday, so I'm stoked on that. Otherwise, I miss the meetings at the Armory, so.
If I might point out, so the odor issue that you're discussing, it is possible for council to consider new requirements, but they'll only be able to be applied to new entities that come in. So the existing ones, there is nothing that we can do physically as staff unless they have to go, they're making a major renovation or upgrade to their building. So all the facilities that you drive by today and can smell that odor, there's nothing that we can force upon them because they have approved use at the present time. I would say that if council does want to consider some potential mitigation factors like filters, purification devices, but they would only be allowed to be imposed upon new businesses in that state.
Are we smelling the dispensaries or grow operation? I mean, on Main Street there, isn't that, I don't know?
That's a grow.
Grow right there.
Yeah.
So those requirements apply to grow operations?
Yep, same thing. They're approved.
And then if you might remember, a few years ago, the next to the former subway building or the Thai Place, there is an outdoor, there's nothing you can do for an outdoor grow. And they also have the same odor issues. So it's a pretty challenging item to work on and make changes to.
Thank you. All right. Any other thing further on concerns of council? All right. Thank you. That takes us to item number 10, business from the city manager. We have a tax foreclosed property. Ms. Myers?
We received a notice from the, from Lane County regarding, from their Lane County Property Management, regarding some tax foreclosed properties around the county, one of them being in Cottage Grove, and notifying us of the opportunity for local jurisdictions to transfer ownership of those properties to the city or a nonprofit for the provision of low-income housing, social services, or childcare services. The property that's located in Cottage Grove is at 1138 Fair. You have a map that shows the location of that. It's on a gravel street. It is not a corner. That is a flag lot that's beside it. And so it has a driveway that goes along beside, but it does have frontage on Fair. It is about a .14 acre site, a good sized piece of property, about 93 by 62 feet across and along. So it's a nice sized piece of property that could possibly hold three to four tiny homes. And so as we were looking at this, we brought this to the council to see if you're interested. I included the manual from Lane County, for the Lane County Manual on how they implement this state law. If we do acquire the transfer, there is a $400 application fee, and then we pay the, some of the transfer costs, the title and the filing and recording fees and things like that. So we're looking probably somewhere less than 1,000, probably even less than $800 to get the piece of property. There is a lovely dwelling on the property, and it's in the pictures there, that almost looks like something from Green Acres, but a house that will come down as soon as if we do get the property that we would take down. We have had a number of nuisance abatement issues on this site. The Lane County, since they have it in their possession, have actually cleared blackberries away and done a lot of the abatement. And so they'd love to get this disposed. If we don't take it, it'll go on to the auction with Lane County. And by taking it ourselves and having it transferred to us, we can pull it out at that auction. The time that it'd have to be for, under state law, for it to be a low income, typically, social services and childcare services would not be something on this site. We don't see that as a need there, or a need in the community, but that would not be a good site for it. We would do residential, since it is a residential neighborhood. It would have to be in that status as a low income for 20 years under state law.
Counsel Fudd?
I forgot. I disclosed Friday, I work for a social service agency, so I have a potential conflict of interest. Our agency has no desire in this, but I need to mention that anyway. And I guess I'll just go ahead and go on. I don't see any downside. Some of the concerns I had initially were, you know, how quickly do we need to develop it? There's no timeframe as long as it's ultimate, you know, purposes is listed here. I think for, you know, trying to put, you know, promote tiny homes, if we could get Square One to do another project or another entity, I think it'd be wonderful. The only downside is doing the, you know, the environmental assessment and taking the place down, which I think, you know, with the abatement we've had to do so far, I think we're in our benefit anyway. So I don't see any downside of doing this, so I'm certainly in favor.
Any other comments?
I guess I'll go ahead and make a motion, if that's okay. I'll move that the council requests to transfer, the transfer of property at 1138 Fair from Lane County to the city for the purpose of low-income housing, and authorize the city manager to pursue the transfer of the property, remove the structure, and seek partners to develop low-income housing on the site. remove the structure and seek partners to develop low income housing on the site.
Second.
A motion in a second. Any other discussion? One of the things that you mentioned, maybe three tiny homes, that triggered a thought. My understanding was that the minimum for tiny homes would, there was some gap between, there was like a dwelling and, and then you could have like an ADU, but you can't have a third. But then you would have to jump to four to have a cottage cluster. Is that, is there room for four?
There may be. I mean, this lot's about the same size as the Legion space over here. So, I mean, there, there could be. It could even be duplexes, depending on the organization we get. They could do attached dwellings. Yeah.
And with the, it sounds like there's an intent to abate, to, to sign the agreements, to abate. Is that also including upgrading of the systems? Would we be putting in the, like the infrastructure as well? Or using the S T C program?
Yeah. And that's what will work out with the nonprofit that we'd be dealing with and working with on it. You know, what works best for them as we move through that process? Do we want to go into the S T Cs and the building permit stuff and have them do everything? We can install the infrastructure for the, the water and sewer. And there's already infrastructure there, but it probably needs to be replaced. And we'd do that anyway. But yeah, the rest of it they would then connect to and we'd go through that process. Yeah.
Okay. So I guess my, my general thoughts is put as much off on, you know, non-city resources to do this. And what a great opportunity for a nonprofit group to get effectively a ready to go piece of property. So this is a motion. So all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Our next item is a mid-year fiscal '22, '23 mid-year financial grade report. Ms. Liggins?
Good evening. Thank you, Council President Urban and City Counselors. A little bit of background in that at the end, the end of the calendar year is midway for our fiscal year. Fiscal year starts July 1, 2022, goes through June 30, 2023. So the financial grade report that you have before you this evening is as of December 31st of 2022. It consists of revenues and expenditures compared to our adopted budget for that time period. It includes changes to the original budget that you adopted as a supplemental budget in October of '22. And if all things were equal, you'd expect to be at 50% received and 50% spent, but not all things are equal. A lot of expenditures may be paid 100% walking into picking into the fiscal year and the females to happen for the remaining 11 months. Some revenues are received monthly, some are received quarterly. So again, it's not equal. So staff takes into that, that into account as we put together this financial grade report. We've graded this with a traffic light. So we sometimes refer to it as the green light or red light, green light report. So you will see those as your scale. All funds are meeting or exceeding expectations except for three. And they are the street fund, industrial park fund, and the building inspection fund. They're graded at under supervision, so they have a yellow traffic light. In the street fund, we will be receiving federal urban aid in the amount of $2,507, $407. And I know that because we've received it this, this week. State and local gas tax revenue is estimated to be at 36% received at the end of December compared to our budget amounts. Same time a year ago, we were at 40%. And I'm thinking that this may be have something to do with the gas price. That may be less uses per. But again, there are two months in arrears before they pay us for the state apportioned gas taxes. Let's see. The fund also has a $2.5 million budget in federal grant revenue that has not been received. And the federal grant is a reimbursement grant. So we will not receive those funds until after eligible expenditures have been submitted for reimbursement. The industrial park fund is anticipating additional revenues from the sale of property. The sale of the property is adequately being pursued. And if the property is not sold, an inter-fund loan will be necessary to pay the debt. The fund will be closely monitored. And at the Friday morning work session, I was asked what the remainder of the outstanding debt was for the industrial park. So I have those numbers for you this evening. So I'll outline the debt that's associated with it. Low cap 2013 will be paid in full this fiscal year. Bond series 2017, we have a balance of $214,477 at the end of the fiscal year. And the industrial park workman property loan that we received has an outstanding balance of $613,330. So the total outstanding debt is $827,807. Potential purchase for the one lot that we, or the lots that we spoke of on Friday morning, we're looking at about $815,000 plus or minus. And there are, there's an additional lot and a portion of a third lot. We, it would require the sale of those properties to be approximately $60,150 to be sufficient to cover all the debt once it's sold. So I believe that we're in a good position if we're able to sell those properties. Let's see. Cash carryover in the building inspection fund was approximately $57,000 less than anticipated. Building inspection fees are also less at this time from construction projects. But we are on target at 50% for the building inspection fees that we receive from the other agencies that contract with us for services. A number of expenditure items directly correlate to the revenue received. So if we don't issue a building permit, we also don't pay the state the portion of their fees. So if the revenue is not received, the expenditure is not made. And we will continue to closely monitor this cash flow. And let's see. If you have any questions at all, I'd be happy to, to clarify that. I did have an opportunity to meet with Counselor Meriday, and I know that Counselor Dryer has asked to have a meeting with me as well. So happy to answer any of your questions that I can.
Just a thank you for that. I assume that workman property, that's the, the big sections between Sweet Lane and, and the industrial park. I assumed that that was it. And so, and I assume that that actually is going to end up paying for our right of way through there as well, correct? So effectively, we're getting that loan paid and we're getting that right of way for our street. Effectively covered that, right?
It is part of that purchase, I believe. And then we will have a remnant of it that may, or may not be useful. And maybe over strict or Stewart would like to comment on those uses or what's planned exactly.
Counselor President, Counselor Fleck. So the portion of the future R Street going through has, I believe, already reimbursed the industrial park fund for the portion that, that the street's going to be in. We're currently in the process. We've made it through the D S L permit now. It looks like we've got to go to the core engineers for wetlands, but we're currently going through the wetlands. There still will be approximately two acres of property left over to sell. If the three parcels move forward with the sale that we're not working on. Once we determine the amount of wetlands that need to be mitigated on that piece of two acres, we'll be able to determine how much is viable and try and sell that piece to insurance for a mortgage of $60,000 to cover the rest of that. So I think, you know, as long as the sale goes through and, and in the next few years we get the wetlands mitigated, we should be able to cover all the debt and service on this.
Thank you.
One of the things that I didn't mention was the debt per year for this. So you're looking at about $65,000 a year for future payments. And those loans, one is paid in full in 2033. And the larger one isn't paid necessarily to be paid in full until 2038. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. That takes us to report from the city manager.
Just want to give a report. The Youth Advisory Council held their If I Were Mayor contest forum last week. We had three former mayors there giving examples and sharing ideas with about seven youth that came to explore and look at the ideas of being a participant in the If I Were Mayor contest. The deadline is coming up, March 14th. So if you do know of anyone who is interested, they need, they have about a month, not quite a month, but about a month to put their, their submission together. We have the poster contest for fourth and fifth grade age kids, the essay contest for six through eight, and then the digital media presentation for high school aged youth in the community. And the first place winners in those categories win a local prize as well as getting submitted to the statewide competition and the possibility of winning up to $500. So encourage anyone that you run into that, that is there and open. We took a number of youth up to the youth summit on Friday in Hillsborough. This is a, it hasn't been annual, but this was the fourth or fifth annual one. They missed one during the pandemic. And youth summit, so youth advisory councils from around the state came. Most of the youth advisory councils in Hillsborough were from the Hillsborough area, Happy Valley, Get Gresham, Beaverton, Hillsborough. Eugene brought their youth advisory council, which is brand new. I think it's a year or two old. So we are no longer the only youth advisory council in Lane County. And they were there with a couple, I think they had three participants as well. And so it was, it was a fun opportunity for them to interact with other youth from around the state and, and learn more about what they're doing and what we're doing and, and doing that. Coming up in March, the Youth Advisory Council will be having their Yak Academy. The police chief talked about the Citizens Academy. This is mirrored after Citizens Academy that I'd participated in before, as well as what Olaf Kansas does and places, where they come in for a day and they spend the entire day with the city going through all the plants, running backhoes, doing a felony traffic stop with the police, running the sewer camera in a sewer pipe, all kinds of stuff that you get to do to see what a city participates, city does. They do it in one day, so they're young, they're energetic, they can do it, and we wear them out. Older people, if we did it, we'd spread it out over several weeks to, to, to take care of that. Also, the Youth Advisory Council has had Roger Brubaker come from Lane County. He's the suicide prevention specialist, I think is his title with Lane County. And he's talked to the youth a number of times about suicide prevention. So I put a request out to him to have him come to the next council meeting to maybe give a report on the suicide report that Lane County has. And maybe even give the city council some tips and pointers that he's given to the youth, to you, to help with suicide prevention or how and what to do with that. So. That's all I have.
All right. We have no items removed from the consent agenda and no city attorney. So we are adjourned.